Three separate ones. Could I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Well, hold on. Let me read them first. So, resolution for awarding contract leading to continuing contract rights or tenure. Whereas Carla Olson Line, Sarah Went, Leila Renberg has served the required number of years of ratio teaching as prescribed by MS 1.28.40. And whereas Carla Olson Line, Sarah Went, and Leila Renberg have successfully met instructional and professional standards of ISD 361 International Falls Public Schools as determined by the immediate supervisor, Tim Iverson. And Melissa K., sorry. Sorry, I don't know what's on here. Whereas Tim Iverson, Principal, and Melissa K., Principal, and Kevin Grover Superintendent now recommend Carla Olson Line, Sarah Went, and Leila Renberg to the School Board to the faculty tenure. Be it resolved that Carla Olson Line upon recommendation of the administration be granted faculty tenure to the extent of .727 FTE. And Sarah Went upon recommendation of the administration be granted faculty tenure to the extent of 1.0 FTE. And Leila Renberg be recommended upon the administration be granted faculty tenure to the extent of 1.0 FTE with all its privileges and responsibilities effective 2018-2018 school year. The motion for the adoption of awarding resolution is seconded by...
Mike Holden.
And we will have... Can you roll call for this? Okay, so roll call vote, Mike Holden.
Yes.
24 feet.
Yes.
Terry Murray.
Yes.
Bronco State H.
Yes.
Michelle Hevner.
Yes.
Heather McBride.
Yes.
Pat Saxon.
Yes.
All voted for and none against, whereupon said resolution was declared duly passed and adopted. And I'm going to call each of you guys up here for your flags. Oh, Carla Olson Line, please.
Stay in there.
Right now?
Just do the other.
Oh. Sarah Went. Leila Renberg. Consent agenda. Item one, approve past meeting minutes for the regular school board meeting of April 16, 2018, and special board meeting of April 23, 2018. Item two, approve current accounts payable due in amounts of $1,000,494.74. Approve payroll in amount of $387,250.65 for paid periods April 27, 2018 to May 11, 2018. Item four, receive PNI grant update report on K activities. That's just written, is there a... Five, approve auditor services agreement with Kristen Larson Allen for the June 30, 2018 financial audit. Item six, approve hire of Ashley Goff as head girls swimming coach for the 2018-2018 season contingent upon receiving head coaching certificate. Item seven, approve hire of the following assistant football coaches for the 2018-2018 season, Jared Koschek, Shel Fulberg, and Seth Edison. Item eight, approve hire of Cheryl Henderson as assistant cross country coach for the 2018-19 season. Approve hire of Gina Lawrenson as assistant volleyball coach for the 2018-2018 season. Item 10, accept the resignation of Ben Iverson as a summer college worker effective immediately. Item 11, accept resignation of Lexi Erickson as summer college worker effective immediately. Item 12, approve hire of the following summer college workers, Emma Meisner and Owen Ammison. Item 13, approve hire of Carla Olson Line as Minnesota Honor Society Advisor of 2018-19 school year. Item 14, approve resignation due to retirement from Patty Jackson, FHS head cook effective June 1, 2018. Item 15, approve hire of Carla Olson Line as district nutrition director effective July 1, 2018 with required training of up to 140 hours to begin upon formal hiring. Wage and benefits per at-will position employment schedule. Item 16, approve hire of Casey Stenberg as technology assistant effective June 1, 2018. Wage and benefits per the at-will position employment schedule. Item 17, accept resignation from Cynthia Warren as PNI grant youth leader effective May 4, 2018. Accept resignation from Ryan Puntercar, social studies teacher, effective June 30, 2018. Item 18, accept resignation due to retirement from Elizabeth Ingersson, paraprofessional effective May 31, 2018. Item 20, approve hire of Katie Morrison as paraprofessional effective April 24, 2018. Item 21, approve hire of Shawna Thorson as paraprofessional effective April 26, 2018. Item 22, approve hire of Ashley Goff as paraprofessional effective April 30, 2018. Item 23, approve hire of Ted Pago as paraprofessional effective May 14, 2018. Item 24, award bid for housing playground grinding and resurfacing to Bowman Asphalt Products at the bid price of $110,000. Item 25, award bid for Phase 1 corridor ceiling project to KMK Myers at bid price of $49,490. Item 26, award bid for Phase 21 corridor lighting project to Cantor Electric at bid price of $45,764. Item 27, approve addition to Phase 1 FHS ceiling project for band room, choir room, and library at cost of $28,928 to KMK Myers. Item 28, approve addition of Phase 1 FHS lighting project to, for band room, choir room, and library at cost of $17,798 to Cantor Electric. Item 29, award bid for Phase 1 corridor light removal to Abay Tech Inc. at price of $30,000. Item 30, award FHS and Wee Lockwood Reversion Project's glass equipment company LLC at cost of $44,199.99. Item 31, receive written on customer report from IEA. Item 32, approve the concurrent enrollment agreement with the Michi State University for the 2018-2019 school year. Item 33, approve English textbook adoption for 2018-2018 at cost of $78,491.93. Item 34, approve lease agreement with Citizens for Baptist AB effective August 1, 2018 to July 31, 2019. Item 35, receive final 2018-17-2018 revenue and expense budgets for approval on June 18, 2018. Item 36, receive revised adopted 2018-2018 revenue and expense budgets for adoption on June 18, 2018. Item 37, acknowledge Glenn Markad as volunteer softball coach for 2017-18 season. Item 38, accept resignation due to retirement of Tamara Keane, choir teacher, effective June 30, 2018. Item 39, accept resignation due to retirement of Barb Johnson, secretary, effective May 31, 2018. Could I have a motion to accept?
I'll make that.
As presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I'd like to just make a few comments, please. First of all, just bring your information on number five, the audit. It was $19,400 last year, went to $19,650, so very acceptable. I would take a chance, and I'm not going to name everyone, to thank those that are retiring as well as resigning for whatever reason leaving the district. Thank you for your service. We have head coach, we have paras, we have secretary, as well as welcome aboard some of the paras that we see hired there are filling some positions that they've had for a while, as well as we have some new positions coming to have a couple one-on-one. So that's where those are coming from. But welcome aboard the new people, as well as thank you for the years of service for those people leaving us. Just so you're on board with the construction projects, for the most part, if you recall on the tenure plan, we had technically this building to be done this year and the elementary to do next year. What happened though is when they were bidding it, the group was afraid they couldn't do this whole building and allow our staff to get it cleaned because we're going to clean it and burn things out in the hallway. So it is, we're still going to do it in two years, but there's some being done here, some being done over there, and vice versa. So it is all going to get done. We're still under budget, but there's only so much data, half a lot of time. That's kind of where we kept down band room and so on, trying to get this one changed, but we can't. So that's good. The Baptist renewal, 2% of the same contract, so that's very acceptable. I think that's all I have. Unless you have any questions, I'll start.
Any questions? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Action items. Item one, resolutions for acceptance of gifts and donations. So I'll give the resolution. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to district, whereas International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals objectives of the school board. Whereas Minnesota Stat 465.03 states the school board may accept a gift, grant, or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, being resolved, the School Board for International Falls Public Schools ISD 361 accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, or grants received by the school district. Bronco football boosters for huddle staff for $81.78. Kerry Kirk hockey tournament for 18-19 volunteer hockey coach, $3,500. Bronco track boosters for 17-18 volunteer coach, $2,500. Anthony Kern Bronco Hall of Fame, $100. PCA International Falls mail to community education programs, $500. Could I get a motion to accept the gifts and donations? So... Second? Okay. And... We will call on... Okay, so all in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Item two, approve four days of unpaid leave for Alex Manasa for childcare leave to be used in December 2018 for the 2018-19 school year. Could I have a motion? Second? Discussion?
I will just comment, it works out first and then last week, and these four days will extend it so that she comes back home and occurs with break, so I can just report it.
Any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Item three, approve superintendent contract with Kevin Grover effective July 1, 2018, ending June 30, 2021. Could I have a motion?
So...
I'll second.
Any discussion? Everyone should have gotten a copy of the contract, I just want to say thank you to Kevin for continuing more years of good service with us.
Yeah, me too. I've been on here six years now, and been a great superintendent and led by example, so keep up the good work.
All in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Item four, add afternoon section of preschool. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Discussion?
I will make some comments. And if anyone did get a set of a copy here of an email from Mrs. K., we have filled up for the most part with additional four-year-olds, and we could fit in the five spots remaining, but we know we'll get three-year-olds, and that's the piece we were talking about, why we've got more four-year-olds, we're not quite sure, but it is a good thing, obviously. So the recommendation is to add back that after the section that we reused, we are, we have gotten some positive information on being able to access some halfway grants, so I can't tell you exactly how much it's going to cost, which we weren't, I'm going to say the state doesn't work, we should be able to get Northland Foundation if it ministers them, we've been told no, or the state after some more discussion has concluded that we will be able to access them, so we're going to try and get families all right, get it, you know, and that should help us on the cost, if we pay for the whole thing, I'm not saying that, but it will help us somewhat. So along with that, the first one we concluded that, so next month we will have an increase of a callback for a title position that will be coming too. So support, and we will still have some spots open for those three-year-olds that way with when we come mid-year because they get some training on the preschool.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Item five, approve amending 2018-2019 school calendar with adding August 27, 2018 as a teacher in-service day and changing March 15, 2018 to a no-school day. Could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Just so the board's on track, the reason for adding the 27th, that is specifically we need another date for LSI training, and so we're maxed out, you know, on the calendar that was adopted. And so, I mean, to say similar to what we did years back, we made a King Kong, there was a year or two, we added, you know, a day or two, and so that's what I'm asking for here, is to add the 27th, we have Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, as in-service days, have a longer weekend, and then we have the day, day, so I figured that we might try to break up March, and look at it there. So that's what we're asking for, you know, my administration, definitely.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. I'll oppose. Motion carried. Discussion items. Item one, discuss award criteria with regards to graduate honors, honor roll, academic excellence award, weighted grading, and hospital action. And everyone should have seen the notes.
So I sent, Ken, so I sent a piece to you that had, that looked like this. I told you I reached out to various schools, these are the ones that have responded. As you look through, there are, you know, there's similarities, there's differences. And then I also mailed, and I think it's attached, is this document, it kind of explains because I got, it is confusing, the different programs that we have. We have our honor roll, which has a principal's list, a honor roll, a non-honor roll, so that's, you know, one piece. The academic excellence award, which was given out last week or so, is a program where they fill out a form such as this, they need to hit a total of 300 points to qualify into 9th, 9th, 12th grade, and there is a very, you know, similar, or there's a graduated scale, if you will, on where the cutoff is. I had written down, and I spoke, I misplaced it, if you recall, if you saw in the pictures, ninth grade, there were, I think, if my memory serves me, right, close to 20 kids. Tenth grade, a few less, but in the same ballpark. Juniors, there were 13, 14, somewhere in there, and there were, I think, about 10 seniors that called, you know, when it was all said and done. And I guess that's, oh, no, I listed it on there, I'm sorry, 18 years, 13 juniors, 18 sophomores, 15 freshmen, that's my memory off, but not too bad. Then we have another piece, the graduating with honors is separate as well, that cumulative GPA of 3.95 or higher. So now, keep in mind, that has none of the service requirements or the attendance, you know, that the academic excellence award does. And then the last thing is the weighted grading, the discussion that comes in, we wait at a .5 to the honors class, intern enrollment class, advanced placement class, top by our instructors for a grade of A through C, okay? Gave you an example, there are like physics, if a person got an A, they actually get a 4.5 instead of 4.0. Over time, that means the 10th, 11th, 12th graders can get higher than a 4.0. That's why in the past we raised the bar, if you will. Last year, we come back, and I know there are roughly 20-plus kids graduating with honors, one of eight kids. You know, the question is where do you want, what percent do you want graduating with honors? Obviously, it's not going to be the same every year. We went back, and I'm just going to say by habit here, this year, and I'm just giving right now, I had a mystery person pull some numbers, we would have 10 kids out of 101 that would make the graduation with honors, okay, without second. If we changed it for some reason to 3.75, 27, obviously that changes. Right now, at this point, 3.75 would be 26 out of 101, so roughly 25%. If 3.7 is 28 out of 101. So given question that comes back for us as a group is, again, if you look on that sheet, we're similar to some places. Now, ours is higher because we have weight, there's only three or four on there that are doing weighted grades. But I guess it comes down to me, the discussion is what do we want for the different awards? Yet, you know, what are people's thoughts? There isn't a right or a wrong answer. I will be honest, I mentioned to a couple board members, I'm not in favor of giving that different grade. You know, everyone graduates has done excellent, you know, they earned what we wanted, earned, just like the non-honor, A, B, presence list. Someone not on the honor list doesn't mean they're not doing excellent work with everything and working above their ability, you know what I'm saying? Just, but everyone doesn't get on A, B, honor, presence list. But that's the discussion, you know, with the group that presented, and I think there were little mis- maybe conceptions on some of what they were talking about, what they were asking for. You know, they, I felt it was necessary to lay out the programs that we have. I don't have an answer. I believe the one thing I do believe is it's tough, anything, we change it in time, obviously, but to change it now, when people, you know, this way it's been laid out, if a group had came, you know, first month of school, and maybe have started with it, okay, I think, you know, maybe we would have had a different discussion. If you recall last year at this time, when we found out we did not update it, well, because this had changed two years ago, if you recall, okay? I understand, we didn't change it, and that's why we let 20-plus kids graduate with honors. It was our fault, it wasn't in the hand, we didn't feel it was fair, we were working under those criteria. But it's a will of the board if you want to do something or not do something, you know, for now or later. I guess my take, I want to see, and I guess it's my opinion, you know, graduating with honors should be looking at a higher standard of some sort. For us, the graduates, great job, but, you know, some are, we have to make our own determination whether it's here or somewhere else, what percent you want to be, we'll come up with a number, you know, fluctuate a little bit, but is it 10%, is it 20%, is it 50%? What do you want graduating with honors? Or some of the other places, two or three levels, you know, we can do something different now, right? Graduating with honors, get a gold cord, graduating with, you know, some other names, you want, you know, I mean, there's a variety of things that can be done, you know, if we want to recognize more people, or you can just drop it down, or you can be the same, or that's where we're at.
So, to the group that presented, when you clarified the actual different categories that were under discussion, which may have been mismatched, what were they really asking?
My assumption was the graduating with honors. You know, and obviously, our academic excellence award, you know, those were the same criteria as far as grade points, so they're not against that being changed, but there is an additional piece to that, the service, the attendance, they weren't, you know, that wasn't a concern.
Well, I would say be consistent with the fairness that we chose last year, going with what was printed in the handbook that at this point in time, you know, two weeks before graduation, you shouldn't be changing the rules because it was printed in the handbook, and if that's what we went by before.
I mean, my stance would be if something was completely wrong, I would advise that we're going to change it, you know what I'm saying? I knew we were wrong, we would correct them, and, you know what I'm saying, we know it's wrong. This is not necessarily wrong, you may have no idea that it's too high, too low, you know, but it's not...
It's our current standard.
It's not wrong, it's in writing, that's where I... The weighted grading, again, I will go on record, I'm behind on weighted grading for the classes that we have, we're trying to keep our, you know, the kids to, some agree with that, some don't agree with that.
If I may, the only problem I see, well, not the only problem, the major problem I see with this, the way that we have it now is we're saying 10 kids will graduate if we keep it the way it is, 26 will graduate if we change to 3.75, and that may be too low, too. But what you do have is what happens when you run into a situation, and this is hypothetical, where, let's say, 50% of the class make that 3.95, it's not going to happen, but the numbers are going to fluctuate up and down, correct? So if we're looking at a percentage of kids that are being awarded this, it seems unfair when you would have to adjust, you know, the cutoff, so to speak.
I'm not saying you adjust, I'm just saying, we did that to see, you know, roughly what percent it is. Yeah, you could have an academically stronger class, just we...
So that's why I think it, I think it hurts an academically stronger class. I think 3.95 is pretty high as it is, I mean, I get the weighted grades and everything. I don't know, I don't know, I guess I don't have a recommendation for the right number, but I could just see, just based on the stats of how it could be really skewed and you could hurt a kid. So what about that guy, the kid who's 3.94 that would make it number 11, you know, it's kind of...
But what happens if 3.75, if we run into that, or 3.8, you know, kids...
No, I get, I get the other side of the argument, and both sides make sense, and that's the problem, I guess, that if we're, if we're doing it to keep less kids from getting it because it's more prestigious that way, I kind of see a problem with that too, so that's my two cents.
And again, I'm not suggesting 100%, we need to have a number, you know, 3.9, 3.8, 3.95, whatever, you know, and, yeah, there'll be 15 kids one year, 14 the next, you know, it's going to fluctuate based on, and that's fine, but if you're going back, we can look back one, two, three years, you know, find a number, as long as we've had weighted grading, it was roughly, we did 3.95, 3.9, but it's coming down to the theme of the board, do you want 25% roughly, you know, graduating with honors, you want 10%? What's the...
I would like 100%. I would like 100%.
Graduating, I agree.
With honors, ideally.
Then let's give it a little more room, you know, that's the yard.
No, I mean, 30.
Yeah, okay, that's...
But I guess I would like to add, I don't think that it was looked at as we're looking to get 10 seniors or 26 seniors, I think it was, first you picked the GPA number, and then you said, so how many would that be? I think we're looking at saying, oh, we only want 10 kids to get it. We're just saying, if we have this, this is about how many will get it this year, but that would...
Stay in back.
Yes.
No, I'm with you, and the only reason we pulled the numbers was, you know, to give you an idea on the kids, because I guess when I look at it, it's kind of like lettering criteria. We've changed our lettering criteria a year for different sports, you know, before swimming, six, nine, nine, a few years back, came with a recommendation, because pretty much every kid was lettering because the number of participants has gotten smaller, and it had criteria, if you're in the top 25 in this event in a section, I think it was. Well, there weren't 25 kids in the section, so every kid was getting, you know, a letter, and they, you know, that's not what we want, we want kids to build achievement, but you wanted to, you know, have to work at it, you know, to get it. Now, other schools, some schools, we make our statement, you know, everyone else, you know, there's different philosophies on it, you know, and so same thing here. One thing I guess, two things, one we have to either acknowledge, we take no action if it stays as it is tonight. We go forward, we can have more discussion, again, the handbook comes back to you in the summer every year. The main thing right now is if we're going to change it for this year, someone asked me a motion, I, and I just find my stance is, I think we should leave the diet, the school of the board, if you want to change it right now for this group. If not, you can directly, if you want more information, if you want, if, you know, whatever, we can pull the source back from, you know, years ago. Again, we have to come up, how many should be grad, you know, what is honors? I mean, and again, I'm just using a percentage, I mean, what do you roughly want? You find a number... You find a number over the last three years that would be about that, if you know.
Oh, so kids that are, that have the honors right now, are they all here, or are they mixed? Like, are they all weighted grades added, or are they not?
They have weighted, I mean, I can, are you asking, are there any small kids in it?
Right. Like, is it a mix, or is it just all FHS students that have the honors?
It's a majority of FHS students, I don't have a list of, you know.
Okay, but they're not all with the weighted grades that are in honors right now?
It's going to be pretty close. I don't get to live.
Well, what happens with it, if you go full-time kids, you know, you pretty much have to be a straight A student. If you recall, when we talked to, we did a couple of classes, any class or whatever, the kids that go, or stay here, obviously have easier, not saying easy, but they're getting weighted grades, that's, those are moving over four point.
And I guess just one more comment for, I guess, just with my experience on the board, and as long as I've been here, this is not something that we entered into lightly, the weighted grades and the levels we are at, it's been pretty much better for every year, having meetings, discussing this, looking at different schools, looking at grades, looking at students, looking at classes, what classes should we wait, what classes don't we want to wait, is this something that's good for the kids, is this something that's going to incentivize kids to, you know, choose some of those higher level classes, you know, and reward them for doing that. I think that's important. I mean, if we just want to hand out stickers to everybody, you know, I don't think that's where we want to be. You know, we want to incent people to, to achieve higher levels, and part of the weighted grading, that's, that's what, that was about, was an incentive for the kids to get the higher grades, so.
I think it's, for one thing, it's too late in the year if you want, and I think discussion is probably good to have on this, but I don't know if right now is the time to take much longer on this, but I'd be willing to look at it for next year. When would that be a good time to do that?
Well, we will bring, I think it's in July, October, July, or August, we bring the handbook back that has all this, like, held, so, I mean, from this point forward, looking at next year, we need to come up with, you know, is it staying the same, changing as of whatever. And I, I mean, if there's a group that wants to look at it, if you want me to get information, whatever, it is going to come back, I mean, in the handbook, but even at that time, we have got a direction that we feel, you know, the board wants.
So get information, people want it, get information.
Well, I think we have, I mean, pretty much, we're also the information here already, it's like.
It's figuring out what the, I'm going to say, feeling of the board is, is, you know, it's hard to what we want to, right, honor, whatever, again, it's not, that's what we need, the direction we need in administration.
I agree with Terry, I, it's late in the morning, it's too close to graduation, we'd be making a decision on that, we need more discussion, we can do that next year. I mean, and it's too, it's too tight right now, it needs to be discussed.
If I may, for the three point nine, I think is the GPA for most awards, in my opinion, it's really hard to achieve, like, I think I had an A minus in one class for just one quarter, and that dropped me down to a three point nine, and, or a three point nine eight, and that's already cutting it really close to that, and like you said, there was only, I think you said there's fifteen kids in my grade that had an academic award, and even for ours, I think our requirement is three point seven five, and that's only like a fifth of our class. I, in my opinion, I'd rather have half of our class graduate, I mean, I know that's a really hard number to achieve, to achieve, but I'd rather have half of my class graduating with honors versus five kids or ten kids, just because it is a really, I know everybody wants it to be this really high prestigious thing, like, you have to work very hard to get it, and even with three point eight or three point seven five, it is still really hard to get sometimes. So I just think we don't have to say right now, but I think it's worth looking at for later on.
But, but keep in mind, you can look at each class, if you're an academic excellent, it does beat kids, we have kids that have four O, but don't have the attendance, don't have the community involvement, you know, on that, they can't get three points in academic excellence, you know, because that's, so I mean, we can look at, actually see any grade you want, you know, at the end of this year, what we want, any grade we can look at, we can tell how many kids, if you go back several years, how many kids, so it's coming out with, you know, what the will of the board is, what it means to graduate with honors, you know, just like, you know.
What's a highest GPA they get, because the weighted grades is like a four point, if they take all the weighted grades classes?
Yes, they take all the weighted grade classes.
Is that like four point two? I'm just coming to my mind.
Four, I was going to say four point one five, four point one eight. It is very tough for students without weighted grades to be.
You have to miss reading first, pretty much.
You can get four credits, four college credits at U level, or a four-year class if you want.
But this is graduating with honors, this isn't the academic excellence, so there's a, you know, there's different things we were talking about, you know, there's honor roll, academic excellence award, graduating with honors, right? So those are all different things, so the academic award is different than graduating with honors, because when you get to the point where graduating with honors, you have had the opportunity to take, you know, all those weighted grades classes that could push your GPA up to a four point two.
But I still think it's like really hard, because I think you said you have to have all those perfect grades to be able to get that, and there's not a lot of kids, even the really good students, a lot of them still have a few A minuses, or like a B or something. I just think it's very difficult to be able to do that, to be able to do that, I just think, I'd definitely rather have more people than less.
What is the direction for us, I guess, what do you need, I mean, we can put it on the journey, you know, to have more discussion, but I need to know if you need more from, from us, you know what I'm saying? Or if your guts, you know, hey, I know what I would do right now, then I need to work to put it on, if that's a will of the board to leave it for now, and visit it for next year, we'll put it on, but I need something, you know what I'm saying, to.
I would say if we want to revisit it, I don't think it's, I guess, I don't think it's fair if we're consistent with what we printed in our handbook last year, we need to be the same, and if we want to move forward in a different direction, that's fine, but it has to be consistent with our working things.
Was this ever, was it ever this before?
Yeah.
Three point nine five?
No.
Never, never.
Not with four point oh?
It was four point oh.
When?
Didn't we do a four point oh? How did we do a four point oh?
No, what happened is, last, if you recall, last year, we forgot to change it for hand, it was at four point.
It was at four point.
But we never got to that, because we didn't put it in the handbook, dropped it off, so we had, you know, all the kids harmed, had harmed, so, but when we got thinking last year, and I brought it back to you, the handbook was getting revised, said, you know, the more I think about it, or we think about it, that didn't sit well, because you could not have any here, and that's when we came back, Mr. Hirsch and I, you know, how could, like you said, we have four credits, we have four credits that we, in your four years, can still get that three point nine five.
For college.
Yeah, college. So, you know, trying, so we did actually never have it in the handbook, you know, and hold it.
But that is what we decided, at one point, we did decide on four point oh, so.
And we've had it at three point nine for how much?
This year.
Just one year.
Because what happened is, we're getting, and again, it depends on what the group wants to see, is twenty-two out of eight, or something like that last year, is that to five percent, or is it what we feel is right for graduating with honors? You know, it's kind of like getting into National Honor, Minnesota Honor Society, what you want the criteria to be, you know, not every kid gets it.
So we decreased the criteria, we went from four to three point nine, we decreased the criteria.
From what the board had approved, yes, but we never held it to that, because we dropped it off, did have.
And it never was lower than three point nine, ever?
Yes, it used to be.
Before weighted grades?
Before weighted grades, it was down to three seven five, and you know, that all part, I mean, the other schools.
Okay.
I recommend emotional numbers.
Okay, I mean, unless someone's going to make motion, I'll go on, and it's not like, and I'll figure out what to do. Between, you know, I guess I'm asking, you know, if we're not going to do anything, do you need more information from me?
I, personally, I just needed to know more about how it worked, how you came up with the three point nine five, how the weighted grades affected it.
Does this clear it up?
And what classes are?
This is, this is better, I just, and I don't have to have it on the next board meeting, on the agenda, I just wanted to be able to understand, so.
Does this, does this help, or not?
It does, I mean, I didn't realize the point five for weighted grades was out of, I mean, I didn't, I didn't know that, so, the more we discuss it, the more I learn about it, but, I mean, as far as moving on now, it's, that's silly, we need to keep the board set for this year.
Well, I should have looked at it earlier, but I, the only thing I'm having a hard time, it doesn't seem like, stay here and will benefit you if you don't, I mean, in the end, they're graduating and they're going out, we want them to excel, and we want to support them as they excel, so I think looking at, like, the three point nine five, that is a little high, if they are going to accomplish, like, they already did it, so. Yeah. So, it's good for today.
Okay, moving on to item number two, class section discussion on possible actions.
Same thing, at the last board meeting, we took some actions, we took some actions tonight, legislatively, I'm going to say they haven't taken a whole lot of action, not probably shouldn't say that, things that not, you know, we could have possibly known where we stand, we don't right now. We did make motions last time, we did approve the phone system, as well as the computer purchases, iPad purchases, it is true, we gave in roughly seventy thousand, something like that, sixty-five thousand, you know, to the good there. And I put it on because the question came up, are we going to revisit and look at something? And, you know, like the fourth grade section, or the Ojibwe class, or the, you know, the variety of Spanish classes, and so I sent in a couple of my updates, and no one responded with anything, so I put it on, I mean, what is the closure of building, a new governor meeting from a sole, you know, I don't know if that affects the kids or not, you know, families. So, right now, I guess I just put it on, looking at anything, or waiting to see what the governor does, you know, I mean, see if the numbers.
Has the numbers changed at all since last?
I'm not aware of that.
Fourth grade?
Fourth grade.
Last one.
So it would still be that twenty seven, twenty seven, twenty eight, instead of twenty seven, twenty eight. So, I'm not asking, I just, I don't put it on.
I was still concerned about the Spanish section, just because I did have parents contact me and students as well, so, and I know it's not fair to just choose one, because we have other sections too that need to be addressed, but, can we have discussion about that?
We can do that, it's what we're having right now, that's our.
Well, in our last meeting, I wanted to discuss the Spanish case, and Michelle said they'll have options, and I'm just wondering what kind of options the students have, because right now, they only have Spanish one and Spanish two, so from there, what do they have for an option? What do they, what do they do?
I believe there's always online choices, isn't there?
Yeah, there's always online, it's not, that really is their only option, you know, the college does not have a Spanish three, if we don't have it here, that is pretty much their only option, no different than any of the other classes, again, not where I want to push kids, but, you know, Ojibwe, if a kid couldn't sure find Ojibwe through online, maybe not many history, I don't think have, you know, like, done that, and it's not offered, in any class of online, obviously, we're important to stay here, base stuff here, but some kid set on that, obviously, if eight kids went and took that online, maybe hindsight says you should have, but again, you know, that's where I struggle with, we have, I have front four bio classes that were in medicine, but both, yeah, those kids have taken initiative to, you know, come forward, partially, yeah, they come forward, and, well, some other teachers, you know, may try to run some students, think that's what it is, I'm afraid to get that, I'm just saying.
So are the students aware that they can do this online? I mean, are they?
I can't answer that question, I can't answer that question.
Where is it online that they go through? It's not the school, it's outside, right? So it'd be an additional time as far as, like.
Well, they can do it during school time, but I mean, there's a multitude of places you could go online, I mean, it's just like, you could take an online P S O, you could take a course, a student's bill, and take it to the U of M, you know, and so, I mean, we try pushing kids that they're going to take it online to go through that, so, going to start online, because they're kind of a consortium you could work with, but you can't pay them for that, and many take it, and we're looking, you know, like, say, we're working on some hell of presence, trying to do that going, which may help down the road, you know, not only to take classes that we don't offer, but also to be able to offer some things other places can't, keep our people.
And that's all set up through Thane, right, if they choose to do an online option, then he works with them to help set it up.
I have a question about budget-wise, because I know we're still waiting to have another meeting regarding safety, right? So if we're looking at more dollars to be put into the school for safety issues, that's my concern.
For the most part, we're waiting to see, I think we're going to get some safety, even the best, and the top course, everything you could be, you know, we did not, I don't, you know, so that's been kind of a preface there, we have that separate safety meeting, because last week, we talked about addressing, oh, my kids here, we had a lot of it, we're going to get some more information on, but until we find out, you know, a what we want to come in, but also, you know, if we're beginning to just say, you know, initially, as soon as we know, I think it's going to come up on our calendar, you know, should we want.
Right, I guess my concern is, because we don't know what the cost of those things are going to be yet, because the discussion on safety hasn't been finalized in terms of what kind of things we would look at, and the amount of money we know, or that we will hopefully be getting, we don't know that, and so, you know, I guess that affects my decisions on what I would go for in terms of class sizes as well.
If I could, back to the online, the problem with that that I have is that I, along with quite a few other people that I have talked to, have been strongly discouraged against taking online courses, and it's also a lot harder to take online courses, because most people are better working in person with someone, and online, you don't have that, plus, it's also, you can't, you don't always have the help you need, it's just what's written, and you can't always, you don't always have the option to ask questions.
And is that the same GPA that they would get through those classes as well as here, or does that change if they're doing online classes?
No, I'm going to make a note, we did, it's not taught by our district, if they take it from college, that's different. Well, you know, the flip side is, we, they're working on the schedule right now, it won't be too long that that will be done, we could actually look at those, like we said, even their, and I think it was getting students interested, or whatever, we've said, I don't know if they all get in certain, you know, that's another piece of it, but assuming once the schedule is set, it wouldn't be too hard to look at, to see if there is even an hour, you know, that they all could get in, because that's not uncommon, you're registered by the name, you know, so that's another piece, so.
And I understand that, I just find it frustrating that our students want education in certain areas that we can't provide it.
Well, I think that's the same for all the classes, that we chose to not go with the shop classes, and, you know, the other things that don't get the higher numbers that are really, really good for our students, but for us to be. But for us to be responsible moving forward, you know, making good financial decisions.
It was easier when we talked about like astronomy. Because I'm thinking like, how many schools offer astronomy? I'm okay with that. But when you talk about Spanish and different shop classes and stuff, things that we should be able to provide, in my opinion, you know, life skills classes, like I just have a hard time just saying, oh, sorry.
Well, I don't know, but Spanish is a life skill class compared to shop.
I think that is very, well, I'm not just saying Spanish, all of them. But I do feel that it's important. They're all important.
I would say that having Spanish online, there's classes that online would be significantly better for. And Spanish would not be one of them. Not saying add a class, it's only gonna have six people back. But my daughter's taking an online class. She, um, she got stuck and said I don't know what to do, similar to what you said. And the first thing I asked her was, did you email the teacher? And she said, no. She emails the teacher, she gets the answer. So, um, and a lot of the future workforce is set up that way too. Where you might not have that one-on-one, where you're gonna have to reach out and ask so many questions that you might not necessarily know face-to-face. So, I mean, there's an upside and downside. I think what it really comes down to is to go in a class with hopefully eight kids, but more like six kids. You know, five kids out of the schedule is not. To me, it's a, no, even though they're very passionate about it, hopefully that passion will carry them through this online classes.
And my daughter did take online Spanish and it was like, she had an A in it.
Does she speak Spanish?
Good stuff in the real place.
You know, just like that, the online, it seems, it seems very person, not everyone is successful. And you know, we go back to that one, and I think we had over forty percent completion. And of course, not a lot of those credit recovery, kids are struggling, you know, and the same, what's probably has come up. Kids that are, you know, dedicated and taking it, I'm gonna say, because they want something that we will offer or condition, probably have a much higher, you know, completion rate. By three, certain classes are, you know, take the help online, the Spanish online, probably not as easy, probably, compared to a, you know, personal client or online side of the class. Again, it's not saying those are easy, but there's something that definitely needs to be done. We want to be to, like I say, just keep-
I would say maybe that's it for now.
I think it'd be good to keep us abreast of what the numbers are. Be interesting to know what they are.
I'd really like to stay up to date on that fourth grade number two.
Is the state of the fourth grade, I think, needs to be looked at as well?
If we went down on it, so that makes the decision, you know, a little easier than we made before. But if it goes up and it even goes up five kids or three kids, it's gonna be a big game changer. So I think we should stand up for those numbers over the summer. I don't think, I mean, I would make a motion to restate or add it, but it's not gonna get the passes. So, um, I think if the numbers go up, we should definitely take another look at it.
I will keep it out. I say, I'll keep it out, okay, tomorrow.
Administer reports. What's the thing?
Right now, we're at, um, five forty-two. We're down one student from last month. We lost two students and gained one student this month. And, um, C B A R school thing is coming up on May twenty-fifth, this Friday. We just had our track meet last Friday. We have kindergarten graduation coming up on May thirtieth at one o'clock. And preschool graduation is also May thirtieth at nine o'clock. And we're getting ready for our P B I F. carnival on the last day of school, May thirty-first. And that will be at Terry Park Arena this year.
Thank you. Give me your sign.
We are at six twelve. Right now, we're down three from last month. Last day for seniors is this Friday, May twenty-fifth. The last day of school for all students is Thursday, May thirty-first. Senior breakfast will be at the Elks on Thursday, May thirty-first at eight-thirty A M. And graduation practice will follow at nine-thirty in Paulside School Gymnasium. Will again be following the final schedule at high school on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth and Wednesday, May thirtieth. And we will have makeup final on Thursday, May thirty-first. On Wednesday, May thirtieth at two P M. We'll be having our end of the year P B I F. pep cuts in Paulside School Gymnasium. And we will, on the last day of school, we'll be organizing numerous events for students to participate in, including softball tournaments, fishing at Gorgeous Park, fishing trips to be drawn. We're going to the golf course, there'll be throwing bowling. And we'll have those activities on Thursday. And then graduation is Sunday, June third at three P M. In the school gym.
Good to you. Kevin?
Okay, um, no specific order here, just to keep you kind of in the loop. We have had an insurance committee meeting on a semi regular basis. And again, we have both three thirty-one representatives, we have by ten representatives, forty-seven ninety-eight representatives, looking at, you know, potential of, do we stick with people, do we look at something different? We're continuing to meet with a group. There's several schools looking at the similar thing. Because it comes up in negotiations each time. And unfortunately, when it comes up at that point, we don't have enough time. So we committed to looking at that, so I just wanted to keep you in mind. I think our next meeting now isn't until early August that they're actually gonna have some numbers and we're gonna have time to look. It would be for down the road, but basically, we're looking at it. Groups are committed to looking at it. I have no idea if we'll look, you know, go a different direction, say we're at work, but we're gonna bring into, you know, forever done, but we have time right now before the next, um, negotiations to thoroughly look at. So that's going on. We've also had a group of teachers as well as administration looking at the period A of the school. For the most part, we've gotten, the last meeting, we're sticking, recommendation is stick with the seventh period A. But look at now, we can get something that could advise in period B. So we are meeting, we are looking, just wanting to kind of in the loop on that. The different groups are working with us on that. Graduation again, just throwing it out there, we're gonna need a little help, um, in, through a speech as well as supporting names as well as handling diplomas out in the past. So, um, if anyone knows, they're not gonna be here, I think they're gonna struggle, is that correct? Is there anyone else that thinks they're not gonna be at graduation?
What's the date again there?
It's the June, it's Sunday, June third or third. Is there someone that would be interesting, interested in reading half of the names?
I'd like to tell a little bit more and I'll do it.
Okay, okay, then I-
And I'll come to, I'll come to the practice.
Then I think that's it.
Make sure I'll watch your head.
I agree, Mel. Two other pieces to bring, or draw to, um, one, just to give you a heads up. We've gotten approximate renewals for property insurance that will come. Both are going up fairly significantly. The property insurance, and they're not set in stone, um, they're looking at other possibilities. But with the fire in the arena, it's a big, big spirit hit on, I don't think that, personally, I don't think it would be a hundred percent acceptable. Because what's happened, and I think I bargained, well, I don't remember now. They are not gonna determine what the cause was. They put enough money into the investigation and they can't find the faulty, you know, piece. So they're cutting their losses, which I understand if, you know, from the insurance standpoint. That, you know, why put two-hundred thousand and figure out what caused something when you have, you know, two-hundred thousand loss? It doesn't make sense. From our standpoint though, I struggle a little bit. I'm not saying it would be any different with any other company. You know, um, we're looking at options, but we're gonna probably thirteen, thirteen and a half thousand. Our insurance is about twenty percent. We will go out, we'll be on a cycle next year. I think it's our fifth year. That's kind of what we've looked at. Will it change or not? Our work comp is also going up. It's based on a lot factor, you know, a lot of things happening. It's in the same ballpark, thirteen, fourteen thousand. And we're looking at, you know, options that are, it's handling the game, we're going out. But I just wanted to, unless, say we have to. Right there. So it's not set in stone, but it's not gonna happen soon. I don't know what we need if, you know, a lot of people go out. It might be a little over gush in the first year or whatever, the business, you know, I feel it's been good, you know, renewals in the past. So right now, I guess we think we're staying, but just be honest. We need to pay big ones in the hospital or not, you know, different character, the bills will drop. Wanted to, you know, look there. And the other thing that has come up, again, I brought it to last year and I'm gonna bring it to you again, um, to get our direction. The calendar. Is that time here again where we go out and start asking businesses for, are we actually sending letters? Are you committed to doing our current calendar? And I throw it out there because of kind of what is covered there right now is seeing as the community of, you know, the online calendar place to go. I know a lot of people are used to having one put on the fridge and I understand. The downside to it is, especially in the spring, it's not up to date very much. Now, the spring sports are on it. And I guess, I think at some point, maybe I'm wrong, we're gonna need to put our effort in to do an up-to-date online. Getting people to just go, I mean, get some, what do you call, pushback at first, definitely. Again, we ask money, we get money, and, you know, to put that out is great. But I need direction from you. If last year you reset, you know, you keep it, are we still there? Are we moving?
What, I mean, if we do go to online, I mean, just to make sure that we have an easily printable month-by-month for people that do wanna do something like that.
What happens, the form we send it in is not the form that you would, you don't understand what we get, it always put in. I'm gonna say in essence, helpful, because we have to send it in a different format to the printer. And so there is, you know, working time.
But like for us, if we do it on, if we do an online one, just that pops up in a nice PDF where people won't have any issues on anything that gets printed out?
And then like you say, I know a free switch and I say, if, if one, I mean, I think thirty years from now, we're struggling out thirty-four. We still have a paper calendar, maybe I'm wrong. We're ready to push back first year, second year, maybe, you know, for some time. What's that?
I live out of my head. I'm not ready to give up the paper calendar. I still have a paper planner and I'm old school. Please don't. Um, is there a way that you could survey parents at the high school and the elementary? Just to see how many people would have a real problem with not having a paper calendar? At some point during the year, is there a time that you're sending out stuff anyway that you could ask? For anyone to get back to you if they were, if they were thinking, if we were going to go to an online, how they would feel? Any information to come back?
Anything to go for, I mean, between now and when we do this all the time. If we're gonna do a meeting, give a lot, we're actually past it.
I don't mean for this year. I don't mean for next year. I mean, if we could survey now for the future.
You gotta get a lot of people to survey on like big things. What's the problem?
I think it might take some time.
You can't get people to survey on like the bigger things, you know? So it's kind of hard to do something with a calendar, but.
Yeah, I don't know. Is it, I mean, is it the cost or why are you thinking?
No, it's the effort. You have a secretary that spends, well, not gonna say half of summer, but a chunk of time, a good chunk of time doing that. And the tough part is, is, you know, sending out the letters, you know, what's it, harassing the businesses that continually, you know, because it's a lot of the same ones that give and give, get their app, I mean. And then it's taken and given in a format for the printer, it's just a lot of, you know, extra. Because we have an online calendar that, you know, most of the stuff's put into, you know, whether it's athletics, whether it's stuff that's scheduled here. To me, the effort would be better, varying into, you know what I'm saying, it'd be a good online calendar.
Yeah, I would like it.
Because I don't need-
I agree with that, but then, I mean, even at that, do we need to send people, I mean, I know maybe it's tacky, but do we need to send them a full glossy printed calendar with pictures? Can't you just make the calendar and send it out in the packets in the fall? You know, do people need the, do people need a simple calendar?
That would be a-
One thing we should take into consideration is we just accepted the letter resignation due to retirement of a person who put it out the last couple of years too. So, I mean, I'm sure we'll find somebody new, but it's gonna be a new learning period for a person as well.
I guess I vote for printing one ourselves, so she understands what rules. Can't we just, I mean, just make little calendars like this?
It's not gonna be the same, you know, I'm gonna be like-
Well, no, you're not gonna put yours and it's not gonna be glossy, but I mean, it'll still be a calendar.
I vote with Michelle's idea. I really think that's a good idea.
I'm voting.
I, we're not voting. I'm going along with Michelle. Michelle's, I disagree.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, I just need direction for us as well as the department that kind of does that. Either continue on as it is, try something different.
I vote for try something different. I mean, if we develop our online calendar that has printable templates and we send one out to everybody in the packets in the fall. And then if they wanna go get an updated one later on, they can print out their own and rip off your own and put the new one in.
Well, we can talk about whether we print or we have someone print it, just won't he get that, that hard glossy?
No, it'll just be, I mean, it's paper.
What's that?
Well, that would make a point. We're not asking for people to advertise. We don't, and we don't need people to advertise. We just want the information. Right? So we're not getting up businesses again for something.
So are you saying there's a cost that's gonna be there or wasn't before because?
Well, the employee cost and then the whatever the printing is. But if we're not gonna most likely pay, you know, to have that, for the next week or it isn't about, you know, staple together, it's gonna be-
Right, but she's gonna have to spend time printing and putting together packets. But if you're planning on going online and keeping it that way, why not just keep it for them as an option? If they wanna print it up, only can print it, otherwise it's there, here's the information. I mean, otherwise you're doing double the work. You're paying for all those copies to go out when they're already online and they can copy that home, right? Why wouldn't you do both?
Can we do both for one year? And maybe that year is not next year. Maybe it's the year after, something like that.
Professional version and the online?
And an online one and see the usage of online. And I mean, I would assume that it'd take off pretty well. We've seen the guy follow his calendar, a lot of, you know, use with it in just the last week. The only thing I could say is, I just noticed from my store, is that there's a lot of people, the Google calendars are super simple. All you have to do is click add to your calendar. There's a lot of people who don't know how to do that or have the ability to figure it out. Like a lot of people. So it's, it's super easy, but that doesn't mean that everybody's gonna do calendars.
Well, we know somebody that does, but you're not.
Well, that may also just have line up around the building to help people set up their calendars.
Why don't you make a video?
Yeah.
Well, that's what they kind of did with Pi when they were having uploading. We talked about that in a different group of, they had a fourth grader, fifth grader show how to do it. And then he said, and then he said, and here's my little brother, that was like a kindergarten or a first grader, and then he showed one.
The tough part with doing it both. Right now, we, like I say, manually, I'm in the same area, different systems, both of work. We have different calendars, facility calendar, we have the activities, our school calendar. And we're gonna have to put time and effort into getting, whether it's a single Google, because we need our school or the other schools that we work with. We're in the both. It's actually doing more work.
Oh, yeah, no, I get that.
And that's, there's a problem I have with what you're saying, we're losing an employee right now. We're gonna try hiring down the road.
I don't think the news here might not-
Why not just update everything like in August or September and then send out that month? And then kind of like the lunch menus go out, just send the full calendar sheet, hold one paper.
Some people like to look at it.
I am.
Yeah.
And then plan from September to December and then December to January.
Planning a trip to like, I'm planning to everyone.
Definitely did it online.
Are we not, let me ask this question. Are we not doing the printing? You know, the, meaning the fancy-
Yeah, I have to do that one.
Okay. I will take and see where we can get that, getting a, um, online with a printed version and see what we can do with that. There are, you know, I don't think.
Sounds good.
I'd also, just to, sorry, keep on beating the set horse. But I'd also just have Mike take a look at how the cal, Mike DC take a look at how the calendar is being done now. Because it seems, uh, it seems weird. We're transposing it a couple of different times to get a file file. I mean, computers are just.
I'd volunteer to help out.
I might want it. It's helpful that I'd be happy to help, but I mean, that's my stuff.
Solution.
I don't think school board members are allowed to do.
It's your last, it's free.
There's, there's some rules on it.
That is all I have, my main question.
Ella?
So, since the evil student council has done a very successful blood drive with thirty participants that filled up our rosters and that was with Watkins as well. We had our two thousand eighteen spring sports meet with two great pep fest. Gina Orin led us to having a walk for water where we walked three miles and raised around seven hundred dollars. The academic awards banquet was a blast and something we hope to do for many more years to come. But we were disappointed in how few people got an academic award because of the G P requirements. Last week, we held our elections for the new exec board and our new members. And during the summer, we have planned a highway cleanup along with another blood drive.
Thank you. Any committee reports?
I have one for the rep committee. We, the last board meeting that we had was pretty uneventful, other than we, I guess I don't know the right term. Ashley Hall is now a rep board and whatever, the great terminology. At large. And then we had a special meeting in between our last school board meeting and this one that allowed sixth graders, and we were debating this anyways, that are brought up. Sixth graders in certain sports that weren't offered by the rep department were able to participate in seventh and eighth grade sports. And it was, the motion was approved with the contingency. We review it every year to make sure it's operating the way we intended it to. So those are the two things that really happened.
Anything else?
The only other thing I would add is just everyone is invited for cake and water to celebrate the continuing contract.
Voice, I have a teachments, but really, can you? All right, a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that motion.
Six fourteen.
Second.
All favor. I'll pause. Okay. Thank you.